We'll call Cory.
Here.
Tammy?
Here.
Anne?
Here.
Cooper?
Here.
Clisham's here. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with all due dignity and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any? Town managers report.
All right. One second, Bob Hope, too. So just, I'll make it quick for tonight, but the Public Works has been preparing for paving. Paving's got to start this week is what I'm being told, so. Significant amount of work on the Stream Road has been completed. Digging culverts to mulching. Just got the other culvert done on the Monroe Road. Wellman completed that project last week. The good thing we did it because the culvert when it was installed, the band wasn't, it wasn't put together properly. And it actually had come apart and it was separated and it was t in right in the middle of the road, so. Good thing we did that project. Pretty satisfied with the way that came out. We did get, and keep in mind this was for the month of August, so we did get our new F-550. So if you see that around, that's replaced the old Dodge 1-ton that was on its last leg, so. Other than it being tall and a little bit larger, it's working really well, so. Pretty happy with that. We did look into the purchase of the second truck to be used as a service truck. We put that on hold for now. I do a significant amount of work with the committees. We have several newer committees that are up and running and I'll let them have their own reports, but constantly communicating with them and I think the committees are working really hard and they're doing a good job. I did meet with RSU-22 last month. I heard from the sheriff's office and I've heard from RSU-22, I believe we have a school resource officer. I think they're just wrapping up the background investigation at this point. So I would anticipate him starting this month. Continuing to do a lot of work with our finance director. We're really prepping for the audit, which is going to be coming up at the end of this month. We're moving to government window, so for the public, you won't see any changes, but there's going to be new card swipers. And if you wanted to make a tax payment online, it'll take you to a new website which completely integrates with our office software. So it'll be much more efficient for the office staff and hopefully for the citizens. Bangor Payroll, we're going live next week with Bangor Payroll. And so I've been doing a, there's a pretty significant amount of work changing over from Trio to Bangor, but they've been great, been really good to work with, so I'm happy with that. I will be holding annual training coming up. I don't have an exact date, so I'll keep that in mind. I'm trying to play it so it's not going to mess up our audit at all. I did attend the town managers' conference. It was three days of seminars. I'll say the lot of the boredom, but it was good. It was good to go, always be around other town managers and be able to pick their brain and especially with the Maine Town and County Manager Association, there's a lot of experience there, so. I thought it was beneficial. We have done, again, more work on our tax acquired properties, which will be addressed later tonight. So I have, I met with Chair, Mr. Clisham, and I have a recommendation for us to work on, the council to work on for policy ordinance and this dealing with our payroll and our accounts payable warrants. So I'm hoping that you guys will take the time and look at that. Just a recommendation from me to make sure that we're doing things properly. And then I have a goal this month and I also would like to talk to the council at your next workshop maybe. And I'm looking to streamline the process for committees and commissions for compliance with FOIA. Not only to streamline that process, but I really want, I've gotten some really great feedback from people about our YouTube. And I want to have all the committees and the commissions start utilizing YouTube. I think it's just very beneficial for the public to be able to participate in meetings as well as helps with minutes. So I, we do a good job of recording the yeas and ayes, but sometimes it's good to have some more contacts. And of course, there's nothing better than just going back and rewatching a meeting, so. I'll be, I'll be kind of working on that and I'm working on how that process looks like. It starts with also our tech company, you know, making sure that every committee and commission, whoever's meeting, has access to this computer system. So, and I'm working through that, but at this point, Chair, that's all for my report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any committee reports tonight? Mary Ann?
I'm going to drag this over here. You're going to be hearing from me a lot tonight. I have several reports from different committees. But the first one is fairly short. The Solid Waste Committee started its food waste diversion project. And right now, we have 32 participants. We're looking to increase that. The first pickup from Peak Composting weighed out at 70 pounds, which was more than we expected for the collection because most of the people haven't picked up their buckets yet. We are within the $1,500 budget. That was allotted to us by the town meeting, so we've been able to get everything we needed to get it up and going within that amount of money. Any questions for me from Solid Waste? Okay. Now I'm going to move on to the Waterfront Acquisition Committee. That committee has asked me to make a report, a monthly report to you. So that's what I'm here to do. My question to you is, do you want me to read the report and then give you a copy or do you want to read alone with me? What's your preference?
Why don't you read it to us?
Oh, and then I'm going to review a copy because there are some attachments. Okay? So this is the Waterfront Acquisition Committee. The committee meets weekly and has met six times as of this report. Recognizing the complexity of the task we were given, our first order of business was to meet with an attorney to determine what legal constraints we would be operating under. Due to an unresolved conflict of interest within Redmond Winchell, we gained only general insight into the issues. However, we were advised to request a title search and ensure that the lien and foreclosure process had no errors. We have requested that an attorney not employed by Redmond Winchell be retained to execute these two searches as soon as possible. The information will inform our recommendations to the town council regarding the feasibility of acquiring this property. And I'm happy to report today that we have now the services of an attorney, so we can start to move forward on those two items. There's more that we will need his advice on as time goes on, but. And I thank Casey for facilitating that. Planning Board Chairman Jim Gilbert joined us to inform us about applicable shoreland zoning requirements because the property is on, within shoreland. Yeah. Within the shoreland.
Zoning requirements?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The complex of shoreland zoning, yeah. Past Waterfront Access Committee member, Donna Gilbert, shared the work that her committee, the Waterfront Access Committee, accomplished before COVID shut down their work. They had envisioned a trail that was run along with the NOSCOT and linked with other trails being developed by the Conservation Committee at that time. The understanding of that committee at that time is that the money currently in the Waterfront Access Reserve Fund was received through a will, though they had no record of whom I had provided the gift. And since then, I have found what I believe is the source of that money and that is attached in a records report here for you to review. A feasibility framework was generously created and shared by associates at Morgan Stanley. One of our members is an employee of Morgan Stanley. And so they put together this framework for us, which has been adopted as the framework for our action plan, which is also attached here. And the action plan is available for anyone to view on our page on the website, town website. So you just go Waterfront Acquisition Committee and click on information and you'll see the action plan there. The action plan serves as a working model at every meeting, keeping us focused on the tasks that need to be completed. We are moving forward on many fronts at one time and invite you to review the notes in our action plan to stay informed. John Johansson, a Winport resident with a background in Marina operations, joined us at a meeting and provided a wealth of information about the potential for property and resources that could assist us with various items in our action plan. And lastly, one of the more pressing problems is the personal property that covers much of the property. Personal property is not part of the tax acquired property, which consists only of land and the structures affixed to the land. As soon as a lawyer can be acquired, we will pursue options related to that. Any questions?
Can I assume that in the budget that you have, the 1,500, is that going to cover fees for the lawyer as well or who is covering the fees for the?
That was Solid Waste.
Oh, that was Solid Waste. Okay. Thank you. So can I go back to the Solid Waste and just ask that question? How are the fees being covered?
They were approved at town meeting, 1,500.
Okay, okay, so that's my question. That's going to cover, whatever's left in the 1,500 is going to help cover for the lawyer, correct?
The lawyer is for a different committee.
Okay.
The lawyer is for the airport acquisition committee.
Waterfront?
Waterfront.
Waterfront. Wait a minute.
The lawyer is for the Waterfront Access Acquisition Committee.
Okay.
And he is going to have to do a title search and review the foreclosure.
And his fees are coming out of where?
The council's contingency fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I have, I'm assuming based on your rules of procedure, Conservation Commission wishes to offer comments related to the Fernal Field, Fernal Field bid, which is later in the agenda, and I understand that would be the time for me to present our comments, right? Prior to discussion on that, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah, thanks, Mary Ann. Are there any other committee reports? Moving on, Chair report. I have nothing to report at this time. Consent agenda.
Make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any? Agenda items. Number one, Winport ambulance service contract.
Mr. Chair, I'll speak to that.
Yeah.
I think we've reached a deal, so to speak. Both sides are happy with the language, so. Tonight, if everybody's had an opportunity to review it, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. If not, we'll print off a smooth copy and I'll just have the chair sign it afterwards.
Yeah, looked good to me.
Are there any questions on that?
That was it.
Ambulance contract?
Perfect. I'll smooth copy that and I'll have you sign that, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Is there anyone here from Community Sola? I see an email we received back that did say you didn't think.
Yeah.
We'd make it.
Yeah, so we'll table that, Mr. Chair.
The Community Sola. Second Time Around Bottles.
Mr. Chair, is Maude here? There's Maude, okay. So I'll speak to this, Maude, but feel free to chime in when you want. So I was contacted by the group that works at the Second Time Around building. They do a wonderful job. It's very well organized. There's been a longstanding agreement, I think, just a verbal agreement. I'm not sure, I wasn't around for the history of this. They've been here for a long, long time. But the, there's bottles that get piled up at the transfer station and it's commonly stated that that goes to the fire department. Just for the record, that goes to the Winport Fire and Rescue Association. So actually a not-for-profit that, again, we have a contract with, hopefully tonight, with. But the Second Time Around building is in need of some repairs and with a goal of serving the Winport population year-round. They want to insulate the building and do a couple renovations at no cost to the taxpayers to try to service that, make it a serviceable building year-round. So in comes the bottles. So whether it takes the place of the Fire and Rescue Association collecting bottles there, whether it's, there's a different spot, if we have a sign, the Second Time Around building would like to start collecting bottles at the transfer station. I think they're both great uses for the bottles. I would state that where there is some handling that needs to be done by town employees, I think the finances from the bottles should stay with the town. So I think since our employees are handling those bottles, my own opinion would be that it would make perfect sense to put the bottle collection money into renovations for the town, saving taxpayers' dollars in the future. That's just my opinion. Maude, if you would like to chime in at any time, if I misspoke or anything, I just think that they do such a good job and they want to do more for the town that it would just be a good opportunity for them to do some, some easy fundraising.
And I even have a couple carpenters that are willing to come in, donate their time to help us put that insulation up once we get it. So.
How's everyone feeling on that?
I'm going to second Tammy and say I also think it's a good idea. And if I could just insert one other thing. Maude, I was very impressed last time I was at the Second Time Around building. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Have you been there since it's been opened up?
I was there two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, yeah.
Yeah. No, it looked good, nice and clean.
Thank you. We take pride in that building.
I can tell.
The name underneath me. There's, there's a need in.
There definitely is.
Yeah, yeah, there is.
Do we need to do a motion on this, Casey, to?
I mean, I don't want to put anybody on the spot here tonight, but I think that, yeah, I think the council should support that and then allow me to meet with the Fire and Rescue Association representation and kind of tell them that we're making a change and why and try to make sure that communication is good, so. I didn't want to put you on the spot.
William Schramm, I'm on the board, the president of Winport Fire and Rescue. The only thing I ask if we do change it, let us collect the bottles that are out there because those have been donated as two, whether it was written anywhere that it was donated to fire departments, let us clean those up and then paper sign up says you aren't going to the fire department anymore. These are there so people know what they're going in because it is a donation.
Right. And I know that the Bottle Redemption Center has accounts set up, so if members of the public would still like to donate to the Winport Fire and Rescue Association, they can take them directly to the facility. And I think we could get a sign made up, an outright sign that would just say Second Time Around Building Bottle Collection Area and so that the public is aware of what the bottles there are, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow the Second Time Around to accept bottles for donations to help renovate the building.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any? Tax-acquired properties, eight, nine, 12, and 26 on Johnson Lane and 1067 North Main Street.
Mr. Chair, I can speak to that. State statute or federal statute and supported by state statutes says that we have to list all tax-acquired properties through a Realtor. There is a catch to that, that if three Realtors come back and say they cannot sell those properties, that it would revert back to the, what I would consider the old way of doing things, which the town council would then have the authority to dispose of tax-acquired property, either through three things, bid abutting landowners and keep the property. I will say that these trailers, in my opinion, are of no valuable value to the town. I think that's evident by three Realtors. Actually, I perceive word from four, for full transparency, that they cannot sell those trailers. And then it's, so tonight what I would ask you is that the town council move forward with, you could either put it out to bid. If there's an offer, we can move forward. Trailer is, a mobile home is different from a house as there's no tenant, so we actually treat it as personal property. So wouldn't require a quitclaim deed, it would just be a bill of sale. And of course, I would just want to verify with town attorney that we're doing that properly if we do move forward. And then I would just like the authority to be able to sign the paperwork for the bill of sale rather than having all five council members sign. So just for efficiency. I think you might have an offer here tonight. Second.
Yeah, I mean, whatever it's going to be done to get this thing taken care of, I mean, this has gone on for 18 months that they have sat there and, you know, I haven't been able to collect. I haven't been collecting any lot rent from them because the town owns them and, I mean, to the tune of $400 a month per trailer, it's a lot of money out of my pocket and I've been, was hoping to get this done back in the spring, so I would have had summer time to be able to pay the lots and rent the lots, but here we are now in September and hopefully we can do something and get it taken care of.
Would you be willing to give us $1 apiece for each piece of property?
Yep.
This is.
I just want, I just want it out of there.
Right. Mr. Chair, you just need a motion in a second and I would just ask that in that motion, you allow me to execute the bill of sale and any other legal paperwork?
Cory?
I'll make the motion to sell the properties of Chris Hamer, $1 apiece. And Casey will be able to do all the paperwork and sign the bill of sales book. Chris?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any? Congratulations, Chris.
Yeah, thanks. I guess it's all a whole lot of, a whole lot of work for a little bit of money, but it's going to be awesome to get them out of there.
Exactly.
All right, Fernal Field bid.
This was tabled from last meeting, Mr. Chair, so it's, it's an update for you guys.
Just where I step up again?
Sure, Mary Ann.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. This time I'd like to give you copies of this because there's maps I'd like to refer to.
Can I ask you just a quick question? Just one quick thing. Did you send us the lease from, the previous lease from the Fernal Field?
I have before, I can again. And there was also another email that was sent to the council today by the Fernal Field Dragway LLC.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. I can send that to you right now, Councilwoman.
So I looked at the packet and I didn't see a proposed lease for Fernal Field. Is that correct? It hasn't been?
No, not yet.
Okay. All right, so this is from the Conservation Commission. As follow-up to the memo we gave you dated 8/19/2025, the Conservation Commission would like to respond to the discussion at the workshop and provide some additional recommendations. We recognize that historically, drag racing at Fernal Field has provided a lease, quote, "to include east-west runway and surrounding boundaries excluding 2,000 feet of the north-south runway on the northernmost end of the area of the east-west runway and between the transfer station access road and the rock barrier," close quote. Historically, this lease has been granted for 28 weeks, April to November, with the operation of automobile and motorcycle functions on said premises, limited to Sunday and 10 Saturdays and four Friday nights per season. The current lease was changed to allow automobile and motorcycle functions on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays between 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. The current lease also gives the lessee exclusive possession during the term of the lease. Even on those days, events are not scheduled. It is our understanding that under consideration are changes that would grant whoever the bid is awarded to the use of both runways and the surrounding boundaries for year-round activities with no limitations. This is problematic to us in several ways. One, Fernal Field is the property of the people of Winchell Ford. Such terms would cut off resident access to all of the airport section of Fernal Field every day of the week for a period of five years. Any residents encroaching on the property would be violating the lease under an exclusive possession provision. If residents are to be granted access, it must be stipulated in the lease and not left to the lessee. Two. Oh, so I would like you to look at the last map, which is the map of Fernal Field. I believe that I got it, we'll see. And that little line is just a little, it's 2,001 feet. I was the name when we did my little person to get it actually on 2,000 feet. But you can see from that that there is no access to that. None. So such terms would cut off access to the natural areas on the eastern side of the north-south runway. The natural areas that surround the runways and surround the runways and the boundaries are under the care of the Conservation Commission and resource protection is one of our responsibilities. The wetlands to the west of the north-south runway has been labeled a wetland by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. We have contacted Maine, the Maine Natural Areas Program to assist us in assessing the wetlands value of an area on the eastern side of the north-south runway. And there's a map in there that actually shows you the wetlands from the national, yeah, National Fish and Wildlife. By the Maine Natural Resources Protection, Shoreland Zoning Act. Fish and Wildlife map that identifies the wetland on the western side of the runway. You can see that they identified wetland is beside the 2,000-foot section of the north-south runway that has been excluded from, historically excluded from leases that have been provided to those interested in Fernal Field. Number four, the Maine Snowmobile Association has the snowmobile trail that crosses the east-west runway as part of Maine's interconnected trail system. There's a map there showing you that trail. There's a map there showing you that trail. So granting a lessee exclusive possession year-round would close off portions of the ITS trail to residents snowmobilers wishing to connect with the other trails in the ITS system, as well as block local trails that connect with ITS eighty-two. Moving on with problematic issues related to some of the considerations, is any lessee can act to protect its business interests within the terms of the lease. It is not the responsibility of the town to do so. And finally, the interests of any business wishing to lease the property should not take precedence over the interest of the residents of Winterport. All property owned by the town of Winterport is the property of its residents. So the Conservation Commission recommends the following. And I hope that you will have these recommendations with you when you sit down to deliberate what you're going to put in the lease, at least to discuss them. One, maintain the two thousand-foot exclusion on the north-south runway in the lease for resident use and wetland protection. Or increase the exclusion footage to create direct access to the north-south runway from the eastern side of the runway. Or create a corridor for vehicular access to the exclusion area, by, for example, by limiting use of the north-south runway to the lessees' cameras, which is what's there right now. Those cameras. Two, recommendation two, better define the surrounding boundaries by stipulating how wide those boundaries will be. For example, there's a grassy plot along the wooded area just below the transfer station that appears to be outside the east-west boundary area, and is part of the ITS snowmobile trail that could be used for parking and access to multi-use trails up into the eastern and northern sections of the natural areas, and to the snowmobile trail. So people could actually park there, and unload their snowmobiles, and head off into what eighty-two does, as you can see in the map, is it connects with the, the other trails. The problem with cutting it off totally on the east-west boundary is there are local trails, which I did not have a map to, that actually hook into that one, that crosses the east-west, crosses over the east-west runway, so. Okay, three, work with the Winterport Riverside Riders Snowmobile Club to reroute, if necessary, under the terms of the lease, the local trails to connect with ITS eighty-two. Four, provide a provision in the lease that grants residents access when events are not scheduled, or stipulate the days of the week, as you have in the past, that the lessee activities can be held, so that residents know the days they can enter and enjoy the benefits of their property. Five, remove exclusive possession, or define the days of the week exclusive possession is granted. Six, for the safety of all users, require the lessee to place no access signs around the perimeter which define the area they have leased, and the days there is no access. We would also like to ensure protection of the natural areas by including these previously requested recommendations in the lease. One, the lessee will ensure that their customers will leave in place all resources in the natural areas surrounding the runways, to include but not limited to dead and down trees, branches, dead standing trees, plants, rocks, and will not disturb animal habitats, nor use the natural areas for dumping of any kind. Two, the lessee will restore all these areas, I think this is actually in the current lease, to their original state upon termination of the lease, and will repair any damages to the natural areas surrounding the leased property. And three, finally, the lessee may be fined for any damage to the natural areas surrounding the leased property. Do you have any questions about what we've asked? I'm not asking for discussion on this, I assume that will take place at a workshop when you actually are writing the lease, but you have any questions about anything that we have recommended? I hope that we drink a water.
Do you have digital copies of everything you gave to the council tonight? I would be happy to submit them as part of the minutes of your work.
Yes, 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 I can send those to you right, yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
Mr. Chair, you want this on your next workshop?
Yeah, but, uh. Fall Fest, Winterport Library.
I have a request before. Can I go, anything with the library, can I go before Fernal Field Dragway talk?
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just trying to create a little laughter, excitement, like a smile, like, oh, you're not me. Anyway, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Eric Holyoke, I'm the sitting president for this next year for the Winterport Memorial Library. I'm here to, on two things, number one is to thank all of you, on the council, and our manager, for working with us this spring on our budget. We have eleven board members, and two librarians as well, one librarian. I was very pleased, and we really thank you guys for working with us. It's the hub, it's the hub of town, in my eyes. The second is to formally invite all of you to Fall Fest. And I wanted to make an agenda item, because we welcome your representation. Not just, I, I speak for the library tonight, but all of you council members, town manager, office staff, at town events, such as the library. This is our second Fall Fest. We do a bake sale, we have a chili cook-off, there's live music. This year, the women's club is doing a book sale, kids games, you name it, it's gonna be there, the storybook block. We are fundraising for numerous things, we have restorations going on. Our doors and windows are ancient, almost as old as the building. Technology improvement, all of that. There's not one set goal that we're fundraising for this year. It's, it's a variety of things. But that was my ask, is to formally invite all of you to please attend. We are seeking, we need some chili cook-off judges, we thought it might be, the counselor, ding dong. Stacey.
Counselor.
Fall Fest this year is September twenty-seventh, from eleven to two, with a rain date of Sunday, September twenty-eighth, same time, eleven to two. Do you have any questions, Mary Ann?
Great.
Good to see you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thanks, Eric.
Cory's gonna get a chili kiss.
Yeah, because he's talking, and now all of you would like the info, but please sign up.
Who would you get in touch with, this, you can have that information as well?
Yeah, I can do that, yeah, I'll send it to you, we have, we have fundraising here now, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
Public forum, anything that's not on the agenda, anyone that would like to speak?
I have a question. Hi, my name's Gail Joyner, I live at eighteen Boston Road, and I am here requesting to you, the town council, to approve posting the Boston Road overweight trucks. I discussed this with town manager on a couple of occasions. Personally, myself, I have been run off the road into the soft shoulder three times by forty-foot rigs, coming down the road headed for on forty-one. Now, when they come off of sixty-nine onto the Boston Road, they take that corner very wide, because they don't wanna wipe out the guard rail. Anybody coming up the hill, approaching them, guess where they have to go? To the right, into the sharper shoulder, or hit the guard rail. Twice, I've had to do that. It's not just my life, it's everybody else that lives on that road. And I've gone out and I've spoken to half dozen of my neighbors up the street, because I live on the last house just before on forty-one, on the right. Everybody's in agreement that forty-foot rigs, tanker trucks, and these big tow trucks with these excavators haul behind them do not need to be on the Boston Road. It wasn't designed for big trucks, it's too narrow, too curvy, and there are a lot of blind spots for driveways, mine included. Just for safety reasons, if anything else, we don't need those big trucks on that section of the road. The Meadow Road is already posted, and you don't see them up there, and there is no policing of that road at all. There is a small section where they have gravel paths, that's allowed. But they only go as far as there, they don't go past the railroad tracks. So I appreciate you some consideration for residents on the Boston Road. And Casey told me, next year, he had planned to repave that road. Well, you're gonna be repaving it in another three years, if you will still allow those big trucks, because it is broken up badly. Thank you to you, Tommy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak? Yeah?
The first thing is, I've been looking for paperwork since June sixteenth. In KC, and I haven't got it yet. So, I'm wondering where that paperwork is. I think it's a little excessive waiting for that paperwork. And the second thing is, I'd like to see us stop wasting money on trying to buy more properties, when I watched plenty of, at least a hundred people who last two weeks complaining about their taxes. They can't afford what they're doing now. So why do we wanna spend some more money? Think you guys ought to take a look at, well, shutting down, some of the stuff that's going on. The things I got to, I mean.
Thank you, Joe. Ellie?
I just have a question, you guys skipped over it, but I wanna hear who the other solar places. That's not the one across from my house.
No, what that was, that was somebody that reached out to us, wanted to, to come in and talk to us about offering us a deal on our electricity through solar, is what it was, wasn't the case statement.
But I thought you guys did an ordinance on it.
Mr. Chair, I don't mind speaking to this, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a solar farm coming to the town of Winterport. It would be like RSU twenty-two does, that they bought into a solar complex, and out of state to keep the electricity. No, I just, I'm just clarifying, it would not be a facility inside the town.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, my name's William Travels, I'm the president of the board of the Rescue, the Winterport Fire and Rescue Association.
Thank you all.
Sir. Dear Winterport Town Council, I'm excited to provide you with our August update on staffing and call activity. Our team continues to grow and strengthen. One of our drivers has advanced to EMT, one of our EMTs is preparing for advanced EMT testing, and our newest hire is awaiting state EMT licensing. These steps forward reflect the dedication and momentum within our service. In August, we responded to forty-four calls, nearly identical to last year's forty-three, year to date. Year to date, we have answered four hundred and four calls, compared to two hundred and fifty-nine at this time last year. A clear indication of both our community's needs and our team's commitment to meeting them. Of August, August, of August, yeah, that's weird. Of August is.
August.
In August, we had fifteen billable calls, six were Medicare, four were main care, one was self-pay, one was VA, and three were commercial insurance. The remaining twenty-nine involved with assist, public assist, or refusals. Most importantly, every shift in August was fully covered, and in September, our schedule is fully staffed. A testament to the reliability and dedication of our providers. Thank you for your continued support of Winterport Ambulance. Together, we are ensuring our community receives strong, dependable emergency medical services. Thank you.
Thank you all. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Does council, town manager, have any response to any of the comments from the public?
Mr. Chair, yeah, just on the Boston Road, just a quick thing, I, I would recommend how one of your workshops review the posted ways ordinance, and then just see what the council's rights are for that. It does stand for discussion, there is no pay shoulders, and they do get aggressively beat up.
Okay.
So I, I do think there's merit to that.
Anyone else? We have no public hearings to set up. Executive session. You just have to read the statute.
I'll read it.
Yeah?
I'll read it. I make a motion that we enter into executive session, one MRSA four oh five, six A.
One second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, will you be expecting to take action on what you're going to be discussing in executive session tonight? So.
No.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah.
We have motion, we have seconded.
Seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Any?